All right, I'm going to call to order President of the City Council's special workshop session agenda. We're here at Murfreesboro Municipal Airport. It's December 8th. It's 11:35. If you'll bow with me and then we'll stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, thank you for this chance that we get to be here for this season, for the reason that we celebrate this season and the opportunity that we get to not only make decisions that will be in the better mood of our community, but that we get to spend time together. Lord, I pray for our staff. We pray for all of those that work in this city that protect us daily and provide the services for our community, that you help us make decisions that will not only be to the benefit to them, but to the benefit of our community. Father, we love you and we praise you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with action items. We have Resolution 21 R37. This is authorizing the city to participate in the Tennessee State Subdivision of the Opioid Abatement Agreement. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon. Our guest, good morning still, members of council. This is a fairly straightforward resolution that's authorizing the city to join the state of Tennessee and other local governments as participants in the state subdivision opioid abatement agreement. As I'm sure many of you know from following the news over the last few years, there's been just a huge amount of litigation arising from the opioid crisis and lawsuits brought by multiple state and local jurisdictions across the country against manufacturers, pharmaceutical companies, and distributors. This, in July, the state of Tennessee, along with several other states, reached a settlement with three manufacturers and distributors. And what this resolution does is, and one manufacturer and three distributors, what this resolution does is authorize the city to participate in a political subdivision in that settlement and to authorize the mayor to sign those settlement agreements on behalf of the city, which are all prerequisites to the city receiving funds. I can't tell you off the, right now, how much money the city will be receiving, but I can say of the, the four, the settlement with those four companies totals $26 billion with a B dollars and approx, I think it's, I just read it, I think it's around 600, sorry. I think it was around 600 million would be coming to the state of Tennessee and political subdivisions. So, and the city would, as a participant in the settlement, would receive a percentage of that 600 billion. The alternative, if we don't participate in this, is if we wanted to go after these companies, we could go after them on our own. My recommendation that this is...
Go get them, Adam.
I mean, seven new attorneys. So, it's my recommendation that you adopt this resolution, the city join as a participant in these settlement agreements. And I can keep you posted as we move forward in terms of, you know, how much is ultimately recovered.
So, move. I'm sorry. We have a motion to second. When that happens, and say it does, settlement finalized, will you come back with a recommendation on settlement to us, on how we would proceed with that?
No, I don't, with the settle, this is accepting the terms of the settlement. And so, we're just going to be participating in this, in the settlement. What I would come back with you, to you with is, this is what, well, first of all, I would come back and say, it has been settled. There's been enough participation by local government entities to meet that threshold for the settlements to take effect. And then I would tell you that how much money the city is likely to receive under the settlements and how, there's probably going, it's going to be paid out periodically. And then it would be, I would say it would be up to city administration to come with a recommendation as to how that money should be allocated.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, or excuse me. Ms. Brown, please call the board.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to item two under Workshop Items, full-scale biosolids thermal dryer and recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. I wanted to, all right, that got taken down. Excuse me. Wanted to go over our biosolids dryer full-scale study. This is the one that... This is the $267,000 study that we got approved about three or four months ago. Good news is, we've only spent about $51,000. And I think we're at a conclusion. So, we're not going to need to go into that whole, we, I was very, I told everybody, get very focused and let's make a decision. We've looked at this long enough. Everybody's kind of getting weary of liberating what we need to do. Now, I will say, you know, a lot of this depends on the outcome of the landfill closure. And I say that on one side of the coin. It may be something as a city we decide we want to do, regardless of whether the landfill keeps allowing us to tip or dump our biosolids at the landfill. Right now, we dewater them, right? So, we dewater, they're only about 15% solids and 85% water. So, real quick, though, what we looked at, these are the, kind of the attributes or the assessed attributes that we looked at, which was redundancy, the equipment footprint, quality of the biosolids, the operational complexity, equipment capacity, and then the 20-year lifecycle cost. And we looked at these five different vendors or manufacturers of biosolids dryers. So, you can kind of see, we just did green light, red light, yellow light. And Comline Sanderson was the, pretty much the obvious winner when we looked at all of these different attributes. So, then I talked to the guys and, or talked to the engineers and said, "Look, we need to reverse engineer this thing and see when we think the landfill will close. What is our, what are our, kind of our drop-dead dates?" So, I said, "Let's just assume July 1 of 2027, the landfill closes and we no longer have that outlet to dump our biosolids." So, backtracking it from there to October of 2021, we have about a year to hold tight until October of 2022. That was kind of what I needed to know is, hey, before we go in, because there's going to be a significant engineering cost to start the project back up and go into a final design. So, if we do not know what the outcome of the landfill is, let's say it, the expansion's approved. In the next year, maybe we don't do this project. We shelf it and say, we can still, if the expansion's getting approved, we can keep dumping biosolids at the landfill. If it doesn't get approved, the expansion doesn't get approved, then we know we've got time to get the final design done. So, we start, we hold the project until 10/1/22. And we actually have thermal dryers in place and ready to go in August '26. And we could probably condense some of that timeline as well. But this is a conservative, conservative approach. About four years from the time we start the design, we'll have it in place and ready to go. Just real quick, this is kind of a schematic layout. We, we're going to be able to fit two of these dryers in our existing truck bay. This is our dewatering building. Right now, where the dewatered solids are dumped into a open-top semi, we're going to be using that space to put in the two of these dryers. We will have to utilize kind of a conveyor system to use the bypass lane that's outside the building to basically load the dried biosolids into the truck at that point. But the good news is, it just means no, no new structure. We can utilize our existing structure.
Oh, that'd be great.
That was kind of a really big deciding factor with the Comline Sanderson units, because, and plus, we have two. So, if one goes down, we have a redundant system. So, kind of the bad news is, is this thing is around $21 million. That's the, that's the cost of, I mean, the thermal dryer package, the equipment is only around $9 million. But you figure a 40% installation, there's some contingency and some overhead and profit and so on. But that's in your memo. So, hopefully, that's a conservative estimate. We do have, and I'm going to jump into a kind of, Water Resource Department Five-Year CIP real quick. I presented this to the board yesterday. We updated our Five-Year CIP. I know that's hard to read, but we basically have about $106 million of projects that we anticipate funding through our working capital reserve account. That's cash, right? We don't have to go get any debt, debt funding source for that. But we do have one project, and I should have made that bigger, but that's the Northeast Regional. We did have to move that into a debt-funded category. That's a 20.5 million. So, rough estimate is, we're around, you know, 125 million, 126 million in the next five years, we're going to have to fund. And that biosolids drying is part of that. We've included that in the Five-Year CIP, even though, you know, again, it's somewhat connected to the landfill. Real quick again, this is kind of the money that's, you know, through the American Rescue Act plan. I know in July, we had a workshop that kind of, with the council, that kind of earmarked certain amounts of money between public health benefit, economic impacts, community and families, essential workers, water sewer infrastructure, stormwater improvements. There's another pot of money that's just come about, designated based on, to the counties, based on, based on, a pro-rata share, based on population, around 18.7 million, I think. Is there, that's a 40% match. So, we have to match about 7.5 million, but that's a $26 million total funding opportunity. And that's where I kind of said, you know, the biosolids project, it may be something with that money from ARP. That's just a project we decided we wanted to create. It's a beneficially reusable product. It, it, it kind of divorces us from any requirements to deal with the landfill. We've got overall creek pump station. That's a 12.3 million project coming up. And then the Salem Highway improvement, sewer project improvements of about 8.5 million. So, we've got, we've got $40 million of projects ready to, I mean, it's, we could spend $40 million in the next two years. And part of the ARP funds is, you have to have it, you have to have it designated by the end of 2024, and you have to have it spent by the end of 2026. That kind of lines up with our timeline on the biosolids dryer. That's it, really, so...
Darren, do you mind, on the ARP funds, do you mind updating the council on the, we met with TDEC, I guess it was a month ago, maybe?
Yeah, it was after this workshop.
Do you mind updating on, we were supposed to have a meeting yesterday, but sort of what happened on the funding on that?
Yeah, so, I, I, I think our lunch had a little, a good, a good effect on this, but it's beginning with that, I guess it's, if you look at the total ARP amount in the table, that's the 41.5 million. That was going to be given to the counties, the county governments, and the county governments were going to have to distribute or disperse that to the different municipalities. So, they were kind of acting as an intermediary. And when we had our lunch with the deputy commissioner, I think we, there was maybe a little constructive criticism on why that was happening and why the funds wouldn't, weren't going to be directly given to the different municipalities, because the county really doesn't have a lot of understanding maybe of what the city, the city-run or city-operated utilities have on a Five-Year CIP or capital funding requirement. So, the meeting got canceled on Monday. The meeting was scheduled to be yesterday, got canceled on Monday. And the reason was that TDEC has now decided that they're going to be giving these funds directly to the cities and no longer using the county as an intermediary. So, I told Greg Young, I appreciated if he had anything to do with it, and all he said was, "You are welcome."
The other thing I think is beneficial for the council and also, you know, is we talked about not only the ARP funds in relation to the money that having to be spent for water and sewer and directly for stormwater management, but, hey, Madeline, but the other 20 some-odd million that we're getting that Aaron has talked about...
24.1.
The, Jason Mumpower spoke at the mayor's caucus a couple of weeks ago, and he specifically said with the lady from TDEC that they were strongly encouraging municipalities and counties to use those funds for water and sewer and stormwater improvements. Because I know that was a concern a while back on trying to figure out how to spend those. But they just said, overall welfare for clean drinking water in stormwater, that's really what they wanted to see it, see it spent on. So, as Darren said, the rich cousin of the water and sewer department gets richer.
It's always tough to give somebody who's got, is flush with cash, more cash. But we've got plenty of projects to spend it on. That was my point of kind of showing, we can, we can beneficially use these ARP funds to, to help out the community.
To make sure I'm up to speed on this, when you say you've got $40 million that needs to be, you have projects, does that include the dryers?
Yes. We could, the Northeast Regional Pump Station, I should maybe, you know, this is where I need to have a slide deck that I can just flip stuff in here. That is really, we're following the alignment of the Cherry Lane, you know, extension, the roadway extension. So, to some degree, we've been married to that project. And as that project develops, we didn't want to go out and run a force main along the roadway alignment and then have the road built on top of it. And then all of a sudden, we've got a, you know, 15-foot-deep force main. We're going to let the road get, the subgrade of the road get built, bury the force main at that four-foot depth. But we're following that same alignment and get to the, so we've kind of been waiting on the road. But I think if we had to, and I've talked to Valerie and some engineers about this, we may, if we had to, if we didn't do the dryer and we wanted to do the Northeast Regional Pump Station and get it done by 2026, we'd get out ahead of the road project. But I would say, we would need to go out and build a big berm to make sure that the force main, we could actually import some fill and kind of, let's just say, construct a component of the subgrade of the road so that we weren't so deep. Because we've had, if y'all recall, we've had a couple of breaks in a reuse line over at St. Thomas Hospital. That reuse line was buried four foot deep before that hospital came in and filled, you know, eight or nine feet. So, we've got a, we've got a almost 16-foot-deep, 24-inch line. And when that thing breaks, it's happened twice. We have to go basically dig and, and, you know, you've seen excavators have to go six, you've got a bench down and you've got a hole the size of a football field to fix a split pipe. We don't want that to happen on a, on a force main. So, I know that's a long-winded answer.
Is that an either, are you kind of saying that's an either-or? Like, we would either do that or the biosol, or the dryer?
We could. It's an either, yeah, sure, either-or. If, if, I think as, as we, the only problem with the Northeast Regional, let's say, it's a challenge, is getting it, to get that in front of the road project, get that built by 2026.
Sounds like, though, your gut has been not to do that. I mean, your, your initial...
Initial, it's either, I mean, yeah, when you say either-or, we can, we've got cash to do both. ARP money can be used to do one or the other. It's, this is just, this is just manna, right? It's just basically dropping out of the sky on us. Our rate structure and our capital reserves are all, we're planning, we were planning on doing all that ourselves. This is just kind of icing that we can use, so...
Any other questions for Darren? Got one thing while Darren's up. I thought it, Darren, it'd be beneficial to, just so you're not getting my opinion on this. You know, we talk about some of the things you don't know until you know. But I got an email about a month ago and didn't realize that this is one of the policies that we have with Murfreesboro Water and Sewer. But it's not a significant amount. I think the number's about 21,000 a year. But we actually charge, if sewer, if you're in an older home that is on septic and you have access to the sewer, but you have not tapped into the sewer, we still charge a minimum amount for that access, even though you're not using it, which I didn't know and felt like that typically that's in a lot of our older neighborhoods that we've run sewer, but they're older homes that just haven't, their septic system is still fine, but we just charge because...
We monthly amount, you talking about?
Yeah, it's, it's about 10 bucks.
It's 10 bucks, $10.22.
So, we charge 120 a year for water and sewer service, or for waters, for sewer service, even though they're not using the sewer service because the sewer line is in front of the house and...
2,000 customers? No, no, there's 165 counts. So, 165 times 10, 20...
Per year, yeah, 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 sorry.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I just, before Darren took that back to the Water and Sewer Board, I wanted to get council's opinion if that's something, you know, we needed.
Keep charging them or not?
Yeah, my opinion was that if you're, even though we ran a sewer line there, if you're not tapped on to it, when you do tap on, you're going to have to pay a tap fee. And then you would be paying, but it, I would be sort of upset if I had a sewer line in front of my house that the city ran, which is great, but I'm not tapped on to it. I'm paying $120 a year for a service that I'm not even using. So, and, you know, $21,000 in the whole scheme of things for water and sewer doesn't make sense to me.
Well, there is some justification for it.
Can you share the background on how we got there?
Gosh, real fast. It used to be, even if it didn't affect your property, but if it was within 250 feet of your property, we charged you for sewer. And we didn't just charge you the minimum, we charged you the commodity rate, too. So, if you use 10,000 gallons of water, you got charged the minimum plus 10,000 gallons of sewer charges. So, we got rid of that in 2009, I think, to say, no, it's got to be on your property. Well, I think about four or five years ago, we finally said, we shouldn't be charging them commodity fees. So, we got rid of it, we just charged them the minimum. Because there's a fixed cost associated with, you know, whether we deliver service or not, it's available. We have to keep that pipe maintained and cleaned and flushed. And so, we kind of said, we'll get rid of the commodity fee, but keep the minimum fee. It's not a big deal to take away the minimum fee, either with 165 counts. Funny story is, my son is on the septic tank on Sulfur Springs Road and gets charged $10.22 a month for sewer.
So, you got to abstain from...
It's, it's just not, it's something I think, if we can, I would, I was thinking about this the other day. It'd be, would it be better to just integrate into the July 1 budget?
Yeah.
If we can do that, but I, it's not an issue.
What I'd recommend to Darren, but I don't want to make this call by myself, is for this to be a discussion at the Water and Sewer Board and let them talk about it. And if they decide that they want to send that to us, then they can. And if they don't, then, you know, that's, that's their decision to talk about it as opposed to saying, do away with it. Let them have that discussion because, my thing, I just got someone who contacted me about it, and I felt like I needed to at least say that that's something that everybody's discussed.
Absolutely.
Are okay with that.
How have we gotten in a position where there's only 165 accounts? I mean, surely, that's happened in other places.
I think the nexus of it, when it originally happened, is when obviously you had the older subdivisions and sewer was run into that area to serve failing septic tanks. Or there, there was actually, I think, a clause in the city code that allowed a petition. If 2/3 of a, of a community came in and wanted sewer, then the city would basically run it into that subdivision. So, I think what happened, though, is you did have people that were, had fine septic tanks, and why would I connect and why would I pay that upfront fee? And I think the way the city got around, it said, okay, you don't have to connect, but we're going to charge you the monthly fees. I think that's how it happened way back, you know, let's say, 60s or 70s, 40, 50 years ago. So, and it's just, I think it's just been kind of a, I don't know what the right word is, just a legacy, a legacy issue in the city code that we just haven't, we've kind of, I would say, made it better. Because there were times I couldn't pass the red, the red flush face test with people when I would try to tell them why we were charging them for the commodity fee. I could kind of pass the test when I told them I could charge you the minimum and not the commodity. But it, I think over time, people have just connected because their, their septic tanks have not, have slowly, you know, kind of ended their useful life. And so, there's only about 165 of those left.
I just, I have to think that there are many more parcels that are county and septic-related parcels that are fronted by septic that aren't in that 165 number.
I, we don't have, you know, in the old counties, if it's a county subdivision, older county, we don't have sewer in there. We never ran sewer through it.
I'm sorry, mainly, I'm thinking the streets. Sewer a lot of times will follow the streets. And you've got, in the Blackman area and some of that...
Yeah, I'd have to...
John Rice Boulevard.
I'm relying on our GIS. He did a query on available sewer and minimum monthly payment or some, some query that came up with the 165.
How about, well, no, never mind, never mind.
Just send it back to let y'all discuss that at Water and Sewer.
I don't think there's going to be...
If it never comes to us, then that's fine.
We should probably get rid of it. I'm good with getting rid of it. I mean, I guess we, we said, I mean, let's send it back to them.
Yeah.
I mean, at the end of the day, I'm not so sure I wouldn't just get rid of it, even if they said not to.
It's a 50, we got a $55 billion budget, I don't think, and 20, it's a $20,000 item. It's not, it's not enough to really get worked up over.
To our defense, Atmos does that. AT&amp;T, I forget what it was, this same person who emailed me said, "Hey, these other utilities do the same thing as well." So, but...
I was actually about to ask earlier if CUD did it. And I was like, well, hold on a minute, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, yeah.
But they do.
All right, Darren, thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, let's go to talk about something I know we're all super excited about going through is the restated employment handbook.
You should be super excited about it. I don't blame you. It's, it's an exciting...
There's a backstory on this, y'all, that Ms. McGannon, back when she did the employee handbook, how thick is our employee handbook?
It's four inches, double-sided.
Really big employee handbook.
Yeah, so, there's a lot to be said about narrowing it down and making it much more useful for our employees. We introduced the topic last...
Look at this airplane.
Time, I think the mayor had already left because he had another meeting. But everybody else heard kind of the introduction and why we were doing it. Rick had suggested that we summarize some of the major changes. So, you have that in front of you? I think that was part of the agenda, the salient changes in there, that, the more significant changes. You could see that, based on, it changes about two and a half pages. That's summarizing 106 sections and I don't know how many hundreds of pages. So, not a lot of changes. A lot of them are just clarifications to go with consistent policy because there was a lot of language in that old, in the old pages that needed to be, needed to be changed. So, I thought I'd bring it back and let you kind of take a look at, at least the summary here on, on what I would consider more significant of the changes that are in there. Some of the language, of course, has changed. So, there's always that, you know, are you changing the meeting? Are you changing just the language? And that all has to do with interpretations as we put them into effect. But generally speaking, the whole idea was just to narrow that employee handbook down to something that was much more useful without making really substantial changes to it at all. So, you know, happy to answer any questions on the summary there. So, the process, I think, would be to give us a few more weeks to work through some of those things, you know, legal's still reviewing. We'll probably put it out on the internet and let employees comment if they have... We'll probably put it out on the internet and let employees comment if they have any questions and see kind of a draft of it. And then bring it back to council, maybe the January, February timeframe to look at and adopt. Or we can bring it back in sections. I mean, I'm open to whatever's easiest for everybody else. I know it's a substantial review. I sent out earlier today, you may not have seen it yet, but you'll see on your emails, an email that has a link to a Dropbox. It has some working files in it you can download where it's got the old policies in there and the new policies and a cross-reference table. So you can follow what's in there and why it's in there a bit easier. So, and I use Dropbox because those are big files, just because of the math involved. And so you can take all or part of it. But if you want any of it printed, I'm happy to print sections of it if you want. I'm trying not to print the whole thing because you'll end up with, you know, a binder like that. It's not, not useful to review, less useful to review than it is to actually put into effect. So I try to avoid that if possible. Any questions, anybody has, or any suggestions on the process? I'm open to whatever makes it easiest for you guys to review. And just to back up, what you'll notice is this isn't the employee handbook summarized. This is the policy part of the employee handbook summarized. And then there's an administrative manual that has administrative directives in it. Probably double this, I think it's 83 pages, so a little bit more than double this. And that takes up the administrative parts of that. And then there'll be an employee services manual that our employee services department will have. And that'll be the real procedural forms that people need to fill out and those types of things. So the book's gotten broken up into different smaller manuals and then summarized out of that to make it a lot more useful. You can just go and pick up what you need and review that and then go on instead of having to deal with a giant binder. Most employees don't deal with it. I mean, they just have to come and ask because it's not something we can distribute. It's parts, maybe all of it is online somewhere in the internet, but even that's hard to kind of get through. Any questions, suggestions, ideas?
You all did a good job on condensing this. I haven't read all the way through it. In fact, you worked a miracle to me, just looking at it, you know, how you condensed it. Maybe you all can practice on when we get our works, I mean, our council agenda. I can miss 60, 50 and 60 pages.
These two pages, this is what you really need to know, these two pages.
Give up bullet points and.
That's planning, they throw all those maps.
For your New Year's resolution.
Darren can just give PowerPoint presentations on council agendas.
It would narrow things down quite a bit. Picture's worth a thousand pieces of paper.
Greg, thank you because Adam and the entire group, one of the complaints we've heard for quite some time is that we really don't have an employee handbook. We more have a legal document that is for department heads and not necessarily for the employees to read through. And so I think this makes it a lot better if an employee has a question, they can at least have the ability to go through and find something fairly quick.
If there are, the one thing that struck me, and I don't really know how this works out, but in the areas where we were trying to avoid being redundant with say state law or something like that where we used to recite it, we do, I assume this is already in place, but we make sure we do have some avenue for our employees to get access to that information via, you know, whether that's via a link to their website or whatever. You know, because some of those things, I guess in some cases, they would need to know what the state law is, even though we don't necessarily need to recite it. There's a way that we have on our website, you know, for employees or something, a way for them to, if that's necessary or not, maybe not. But it just struck me that if there are cases where they need to know it.
Yeah, I think they're.
Google's a wonderful thing.
Yeah, I mean.
You can find all of them.
I mean, this is something that we put on the internet. And you could always do a hyperlink to, if it's, if it's a site to the Code of Federal Regulations, you could do a hyperlink to that, to that site. If it's a federal statute, you know, there are, there are some free, Cornell University's Law School has one of the best online, you know, compendiums of the US Code, so of laws enacted by Congress. So that type of thing, we could do that type of hyperlink pretty easily. Same thing with the state statute if we needed to decide to it. That might be the easiest way to do it if they were accessing it online.
Yeah, we can, we can make sure it's available, accessible. It's all state law or federal law, so generally it is. Generally, particularly with the federal statutes or federal regulations, you start reading them and you stop real fast unless you're a lawyer. Because it's just, it's pretty tough, it's a tough go. And, you know, our employee services department would deal with things like the ADA all the time is available and they have, they do have, will continue to develop summaries of what those things say and how they impact the employees and things. But that's a good suggestion, we'll make sure it's available.
I mean, really, if y'all see, based on the way ours is laid out, like I said, if we used to think it was important to recite it, I certainly agree that it isn't. But we probably need to have, they probably need to be able to have some access or.
Yeah, it'd be a lot more accessible with a link than it would be in our employee handbook.
Yes, I agree. I mean, I completely agree with that, yeah.
Any other questions on the handbook? Do you need a motion on this, Greg?
No, no, we'll keep working on it and get it back. I said probably January, February timeframe, maybe into March sometime we'll bring back our policy.
Any questions on the October 2021 dashboard? I'm sure everybody looked at that, but our sales tax projections are outpacing every single one of our budget numbers and then our expense numbers are below our budget numbers, which is a pretty good trend.
I think our property taxes are preliminary that we've gotten in as positive as well. Do we do reassessment next year for effective?
We're in reassessment this year.
Yeah, so that reassessment will probably make a big difference as well because of property values and what's happening.
All right, any questions on that? All right, you have some beer license or beer permits in front of you?
We've got one for an ownership and name change for a convenience store at 2374 Old Fort Parkway. The applicant has met all requirements and we're ready to issue the permit upon final inspection from Building and Codes and approval from Beer Board.
With approval.
Question, second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Hi.
Mr. LaLance.
Hi.
Mr. Martin.
Hi.
Backlit.
Mr. Wade.
Hi.
Mr. Wright.
Hi.
Chairman Carlin.
Hi, any other business for staff? All right, council, Rick?
I'm just going to give you guys a little bit of an update on the MED proceeds and what we had going on last there, just kind of as a reminder to y'all. Adam and I, we had a Zoom call with the two outside council folks a week ago-ish, week and a half ago or so. And then Adam and I had had a couple of meetings prior to that. He's been having discussions with the other attorneys. So that where we left this last was for them to put together a draft of the charter amendment and to start putting together a draft of the trust document, okay, that outlined all the things that we agreed on. So that draft is not exactly, is not complete yet, but it's very close and we're going, they're cleaning a few things up. And then we'll get that, I think the plan is to get that out to everybody to have some review because we will need to move fairly quickly once that is here because we're kind of nearing the end of the year. But kind of, the one thing I wanted to pass along to you guys, just to kind of be prepared for after we juggled around a few of these things, I think I got the things that I felt like the council had wanted in the charter amendment in there. And that was the kind of the biggies, that there's going to be like those left three or four columns, right? That was the stuff that I kind of had in my mind would be in the charter amendment because those are things we wanted etched in stone. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna spend X amount of money this way and X amount of money this way and X amount of money this way will go into the trust. Something to just sort of prepare your minds for, and this is something that we had a good discussion with, with the other attorneys and Adam really had already done this. We just, I think, furthered it a little bit was to kind of, you know, the charter amendment is not a, you know, you might think that all this stuff we talked about would culminate in a 40-page document. The charter amendment is not that. It's a lot more simple. It's just the things that we wanted to get in there and shrine. We, you know, kind of trying to ride the line of getting all the stuff that we want in there so that it is, so that that part would require a charter change to change it, i.e. how much money's going to go into the trust? How much money's going to go towards roads? How, you know, those kinds of things are definitely in there. The stuff that we didn't want in there were kind of the more administrative type things that if we got into this thing a year or two down the road and you wanted to, you know, we want to send an ACH instead of a check, but the charter change says a check, well, you got to go all the way back through the General Assembly to try to get a draft instead of a check. You see what I mean, or a wire? So we, there were a couple of more things that we ended up taking out. But Adam, I mean, I'll just tell you, just my personal, when I first looked at it, I was a little bit kind of, wow, it's a little shorter than I expected, but for really good reasons. So I just want to kind of prepare y'all for that and just make sure when you guys do get a copy of this to review, I think the main, you know, keep that mindset in. Most of those details will be laid out of the things that were in the trust will be in the trust document for the trust part of this, okay? But just make sure when you look at that charter change, you're looking at, hey, this is what we felt like, what we wanted it to say and where what we wanted to have happen. If there's anything else you want it to be kind of etched in that hole, you got to go back through the General Assembly to change this. That's what you need to be thinking about when you read it. Fair?
Your intent to do this and present this during a workshop, so how were you going to?
You know, today was sort of our day for that, but we, it just took longer. I think the attorneys, I mean, I think our original, I think their original goal was to try to get this to us by the end of October. It didn't quite happen, so it wasn't able to do today. It's pretty straightforward, Bill. Now, I can tell you that that's part of what I'm sort of saying. This charter amendment is pretty doggone straightforward. It just lays out literally those columns that are to the left so that it takes General Assembly charter change to change anything that's in the charter change that we made. You know, so it's pretty doggone straightforward. So that part of it, we may not have to, but we can do it at a meeting. It doesn't necessarily need to be a workshop.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it would be, you know, a long detailed presentation to go over the things that I can, when I circulate it, I can, I'll be happy to include like an explanatory memo as to why certain things are the way they are. Another example for, that's along the lines of what Rick was talking about in terms of what should be in the charter amendment and what should be in the trust agreement or the declaration of trust, which is basically what council establishes, what it adopts after the charter amendment is made, which is giving you the authority to enter into that trust agreement. So an example is, well, how are, how is, how are members of the board of directors chosen? You know, that, you know, they're very broad. In the charter amendment, it talks about seven, seven members appointed by city council, you know, that they have to reside in the city. One of them has to be a member of city council. But in terms of the different types of classifications, do you want to establish like one of them has to be a CPA, one of them has to be a lawyer, you know, all of that? Or how, what do you do when, you know, someone steps down from the board? You know, that, that doesn't need to be in the charter amendment. Let's deal with that in the trust agreement because you don't want to have to go back to the General Assembly when you realize what you put in the charter amendment isn't going to work. And so it allows some of that administrative flexibility that was originally in the first draft of the trust agreement, or I'm sorry, the first draft of the charter amendment is pulling that out of the charter amendment and into the trust agreement.
We've already got, I guess, confirmation from the state that they're not looking for that kind of detail.
We're working on that still.
We're working on it.
Just now getting to that point.
Yeah.
Wanted to get it as clean as we could before getting to that point.
The other, if you don't mind, Rick, the other thing that is, and this along the lines of what Rick was talking about, those columns on the left, there were two additional sections to the charter amendment that basically take, you know, that, the money that's going to be, that you all talked about being dedicated to a park and all of the money that you talked about being dedicated to transportation projects. And so there were two shorter sections that basically say, this money, from this amount of money from the MED sale proceeds are going to be allocated to a sinking fund to fund a park. And this amount of money from the MED sale proceeds are going to be allocated to a sinking fund for transportation projects. And basically what the sinking fund is just, that money will be used to pay the debt service on, you know, bond proceeds that are used for those types of projects. And so that kind of locks up that second.
And it's laid out just like the spreadsheet had it, you know? I mean, that, it's not, it's not just a total number. It's X amount in this year, X amount in this year. You know, there's a chart that literally mimics the spreadsheet for those three sections. And that's those things I was telling you on the left side of the spreadsheet, right? That's all in there because that was, I felt like clearly what we wanted to make sure wasn't somebody two years from now could just say, well, no, 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 we're not going to fund the trust that heavily this year. We're going to do something different with that money. Well, if they do something different with money, they got to go to the General Assembly to change it, okay? Or a, what you call, referendum, okay? So, or both, I can't remember if it was, but you know, the idea being though, that stuff mimics exactly what we had in that final spreadsheet. But again, it doesn't have every little nitty gritty detail of how things might be done. And again, we don't want that, you know, we don't want people to have to go through that for what method are you going to get the check, right? And that kind of stuff just doesn't need to be in there, in the charter amendment.
Yeah, and just one more thing, you will not see in the charter amendment the establishment of a board that makes recommendations for the charitable contributions. It's referenced vaguely as a board created by council to advise about how things should be spent, how those, but that, how those charitable contributions should be made. But that board, the establishment of that board does not have to be in the charter amendment. Council can do that by ordinance. And so that will, that, the board of trustees for the trust is in the charter amendment. But the board or committee that makes recommendations about how the charitable donations should be made, that's going to be established by ordinance. And that's why you won't see it in the charter amendment.
That will also all be in the trust document too, though, right? That, you know, that's the kind of stuff, it'll be in the, because, you know, there's a big board. Remember what we were calling kind of the big board? That's what really needs to be established in the immediate need right now. And then once we do the trust, it'll kind of go into that next level of detail on all those things. Just want to get everybody kind of updated so you sort of had a little bit of, little bit of heads up on that.
I'd encourage us to give us plenty of time to kind of, because, you know, it's been so long since we've had some of that figures. Y'all are fresh on those, on your minds, but I don't know that, at least my mind is not fresh on what we were talking about specifically. And I'd like to know before we get to it, say.
On our Zoom meeting the other day, I think Adam will attest to this. I mean, I just kind of said, look, we, you know, we need to get it through the process of getting it, kind of make sure everybody's language matches up to where, how everybody wants it, okay? We'll get that, get it out to everybody. And then, you know, we felt like, and I think it was something that Jim was going to check on for us just to be sure, but I've gotten an indication that this isn't one of those types of things where it's not going to be like a full-on bill where they have to have all the information by December 15th or whatever the day is, you know, that kind of deal. So we've got a little bit of lead time, we got a little bit of time on this. We don't need to be coming in there April 1st.
Right.
You know, not even March 1st. You know, not even March 1st, I mean, any of that, we need to go ahead and get it rolling, but we don't have to have it by tomorrow, so it's not going to be like that, okay? But I told Adam, you know, that was telling, I told them, hey, look, I mean, you know, if we got, whenever we got our next meeting scheduled, depending on how we, you know, how the communication goes, we're going to absolutely, I mean, we're going to absolutely have some, have a meeting that's going to be set, we're going to have a substantial amount of time set aside. I think you'll find that it's pretty, it's a lot more straightforward than you think, and will be a little bit easier than you think. But again, I think kind of the reason of that is, and I had to kind of come to grips with a little bit on our Zoom call of like, okay, wait a minute, Rick, you know, what is it that the council, I felt like at least, what is it that we were trying to put in this category of, these are things we don't want to be able to be changed unless state legislature says it's okay or referendum? That's what's in the charter change, because that's how that technically works, right? There are some other details that are going to come in the form of the trust document and stuff like that yet to come.
Yeah.
And that's it, but all the big picture stuff is laid out in the charter amendment, like, you know, like he said, there's stuff that's mentioned in there, it's just not necessarily.
Fine.
It's not defined to the extent of like these board members, you know, are they going to, how are we going to pick out which one serves a one year, two year, three year, you know, that kind of stuff that we talked, no, no, that doesn't need to be in the charter, you know, and to a certain extent, guys, we all, you know, part of this is, we're also kind of got to take the attitude of, we don't, you know, some of these things, obviously, when you do things that are this big, you want to leave yourself a little bit of.
Wiggle run.
A little bit of flexibility down the road, right, without having to go back through legislature every little time you, like I said, decide you want to pay by draft instead of by check. I mean, those little things that we may have just not put in the document, right? So just anyway, that, that's really the main thing I wanted to get across today, would just sort of be prepared for that, y'all will be seeing that pretty soon, but yeah, we'll obviously have time to talk about it, you know, we got time to talk about it. Jim was double checking, he hadn't called you back and said that he got with his folks yet.
But I can, I'll shoot him an email today.
That was the, just to make sure we have time.
Yeah.
We all think we have time, he was going to make a couple phone calls and just make sure, no, no, you've got until January, you're good, no problem, because we were talking about the same exact thing, hey, we need to give everybody plenty of time, look over this and think through it, you know, unless they come back to us and say, no, no, you got to have it December 31st, which means we're meeting on December 23rd kind of deal, for me, I mean, whatever, however we want to handle it. Good? See it?
This Sunday, this Sunday is Christmas Parade at 2 o'clock. I think Nate's going to send out an email if anybody wants to participate on council. Hope, and it gets you in the parade, and I don't think you have to dress up or anything, maybe throw candy at kids.
That's about it.
That's about it. So, so that'll be available. And then I learned this Friday is the reception for the city's laureates, right? Do you know about this? You do, probably.
I know about it.
Yeah.
Details, I have six of them.
They have a dance, yeah, 6 o'clock, 6:00, 7:30 is the reception in the rotunda with the dance, the actor and the poet laureates for the city, and they were actively participating last night when I left, and so, or getting ready anyway, for the reception, so it's kind of a neat thing. If anybody has Friday evening open, come on down to Rotunda for a little bit, see y'all, get some culture, be good for you.
Why were you looking at me when you said that? I probably stand in a swamp somewhere.
All right, any other?
When is the Rotunda Christmas dinner, lunch, Wednesday?
14? 14. Oh, was there some mail that we had? Did y'all get an email? Didn't we get an email saying we had something in the mail for all of us?
Oh, to come pick up, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was from Brenda from EFI, or E, yeah.
Oh, that's right. Well, no, that was different.
Pick them up if you would, or say, oh, tell Brenda, because hopefully they're tomorrow, if you stop by, she's got them, just pick them up.
I was actually thinking about mail, not that, not Jay, but I was thinking about something, something, I thought we had something in the mail.
Tomorrow, we're saying.
I think the only thing we had in the mail was this from Dr. McPhee.
That's a sign. Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Talk about tomorrow.
On 2:30, we'll have a economic development announcement. Mayor McFarlane will lead that, we'll have more details on that at 2 o'clock. We'll have a quick meet and greet for our council members in the ACR with their development team, then following the announcement, tomorrow we'll have a meet and greet reception open to everyone to meet the development team, learn more about the project. So we're excited about the opportunities coming tomorrow for us, brother, we'll be able to announce tomorrow.
All right, everyone, seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned.